Well, welcome everyone. Well, we need a motion signed. I already did that one.
What was that?
You're making at your point.
A motion is signed and launched.
So move.
All in favor? Uh, warrants?
While you're busy signing that, can make the motion in two minutes, February 5th?
Second. All in favor? It should have been as written and I haven't been. Had everybody had a chance to look at them?
Yeah.
It should be in a package. That's the original.
Yep.
All right, we have some old business to attend to. We had an constituent request, a sewer district abatement, and I believe Jason did some research on this, and you'll have some comments.
Yeah, I mean, I looked into it. As you asked, about every town does it the same way, is what we have. The problem we have here is, we have no business. We don't have any business at all. So, I mean, we have no flow. We don't have any flow going into the sewer system, so it's better than very well sold. So basically...
Do I need to use the gavel?
You did, of course. So basically, to cut any money out of it.
Well, it was passed by the Select Board that everyone who was, had the capability hooking up to the sewer, either now or in the future would pay the minimum. And we passed the minimum, and then we had, we went and passed a new minimum just three or four months ago.
It was actually, I think it was about a year ago, it was a four-on-one vote. I actually voted against it, raising it. And I shouldn't have. I was wrong to do that. I mean, I should have, should have went the other way.
Well, I went back and researched some of my, did some of my own research, and when the sewer was put in, the actual lending of the money that we borrowed money, that was agreed upon that the entire town would pay that back, the debt back, but as for the daily activity, the daily costs or the yearly costs were to be divided amongst the users. So if we were to even consider that, it would be a huge expense.
It's about a change you're praising then.
Twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
Changing what?
So we're saying that...
Are potentially used.
We cannot change, as I remember, Tanny came in and requested that she would continue to pay, but she would request a reduced amount to pay for the sewer bill as she has no intention of ever hooking that up that's functioning.
Well, she wouldn't know that because if she were to hurt a seller, then that person might have the ability. There's something like seventy people.
That's a conundrum.
And eighty, and for that, then everybody's bill would be twice as much, and they have the opportunity to hook up when it was put in.
Yeah.
And this, before our time, this was voted that it would be divided amongst everyone as a minimum. And there are plenty of people that pay more money. They pay two and three. When I owned Coles years ago, my sewer bill was four or five hundred dollars a month during the summer. So it is...
Because of usage.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, I haven't figured out a better way to do it. And I haven't heard a better way to do it. Yeah. And I talked to some people that were in on it on the ground floor, and they did tough research to get, to get aware of it.
Because you're saying that the towns that allow a lower minimum for people that are not hooked up at the time, we can't afford that.
No.
They have way more, they have full-time businesses, which Jason's trying to say is there.
They have a lot more flow.
A lot more people hooked up. So this was the agreement. This is what Select Board came through, and you, properties were recently purchased, knowing that there was a bill, there was a bill attached to each one of them. And we gave the person an opportunity to conjoin the properties, put them together as one, and then that would be allowable.
See, we're already, what, thirty-five thousand dollars in red, as we are now. We'll add another twenty.
No, it's less now. Now that we raised the minimum, we're almost, we're almost...
Do we have a projection as to when that's going to...
We may have to raise it again. We basically said that when we, yeah, did it.
I know, you voted no. I voted actually to.
Yes.
You should have gone more and ripped the band-aid off.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. I should have. I was wrong.
Does anybody know what we're talking about?
Speaking indirectly, though, the person who spoke here was also saying the fact that, to the point of mismanaging, is not necessarily, would be correlated to her responsibility, that the mismanagement of the system caused the negative.
Mm-hmm.
But I'll step back.
Yeah. I also think that times are, as somebody said, Michael, that the town is growing, that it's, people are purchasing properties. So this business of the sewer usage may change within the next few years, and we may need to revisit this.
So do you have some kind of motion you'd like to make, Jason?
There was really not a motion made to begin with, right? I'll just say, we need to keep it the same until we find a better way of doing it. Until something comes up that's better than what we have.
So we'll have, well, no action. No action will be taken since we are keeping it the same. I think, I mean, I, do you agree with that?
I do, too.
So that isn't, so we haven't made a decision. We just decided we are not going to change it now.
I mean, we all have no mind if something, something better comes up.
Obviously, yes.
Let's have it. That'll work for everybody, you know? And I mean, I'm not in myself. I don't have a property in the district. So I feel kind of funny speaking about it, you know, and making decisions about it because I'm not in it. But I do pay for it. It's my tax dollars. So until something better comes along, I guess.
So the motion is that we will, we will leave the fee as is, for now?
Yeah.
And do we have a second?
A second.
Second.
All in favor? Those opposed? Abstained? We got it.
Okay.
We're all good.
Did you get that?
Okay. Okay, let's see now. MMA Risk Management Inspection. There is one thing left that has to be fixed, and I apologize, I do not know when they know, but that says it's going to be taken care of, and then we'll be, we will be all signed off on the Risk Management Inspection. Planning Board. The Planning Board has requested that they have a recorder at their meetings, and it has been put in their, is it in the ordinance?
It has been in the ordinance.
That that person will be paid thirty-five dollars. They also have to be an associate...
A session, a meeting, each meeting.
Thirty-five dollars each meeting.
Yeah.
And that they have to be an associate member.
Associate member.
So we need to appoint Susan Harrow as an associate member, who is agreed to do this recording. And as the town grows, we will have more work to do on the Planning Board, so it's a very good idea.
It's already shown.
So we need a motion to, I'll make the motion to appoint Susan Harrow as the associate member of the Planning Board, and also as the Recording Secretary. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Thank you.
Well, while we're signing that, Julie, nothing to update on the Safe Harbor. We are having the entire Maraud team be here the 23rd and the 24th. That's seven people coming from Washington to review the sites. And Julie and I and the committee have been working on the environmental studies and making sure that that's getting taken care of. And we will have a meeting on Monday at five.
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth?
Yeah. Okay.
Oh.
This Monday at five?
Right.
Is this Monday coming?
Yes, this Monday at five. Safe Harbor meeting. So let's see, wastewater treatment CD. Okay. So we, as a town, for the last two years have put aside our twenty-five thousand dollars each year to offset our matching funds that's going to be required by this multimillion-dollar upgrade to the sewer department. Renee and Suzette have requested that the fifty thousand be put along with the thirty-five, thirty-one thousand dollar CD that has come due, that was also put aside for this sewer, that we put it together in the Bar Harbor Bank Trust in the CD. So we need agreement that that monies that we set aside will be earning interest. So do we have an agreement that we can put both the fifty thousand and the thirty-one thousand that's come due?
I would move that we do that.
All in favor? Okay. We have two, I don't know what an HH bond series is, but we have two five-hundred-dollar series that have come due, and they are wanting, they're supposed to be put in the general fund account. We need permission to put them in the general fund account. That's a total of a thousand dollars.
I would move that we put those in the general fund account.
Do I have a second?
All in favor?
Maureen, you're on.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Would you like to give her a chair? Would you like a chair? I can sit with you, but there's a big table there. I don't want to talk in the hall. I'm here for the marathon, the Fundy International Marathon, and it's our annual request to approve from the town to go ahead with the event, approve the traffic and parking arrangements, and assistance from the Works Department with their usual barriers and cones, and flag placement, and assistance from the Fire Department, use of the Town Office on Way State for Traffic Control and Emergency Management. And that's all right there at the bottom, what we're formally requesting, but up top are just some notes about how many people we're expecting, the times for the roads that would need to be shut off, which they're almost identical to previous years.
So is there any major difference?
No major difference.
How are you doing for volunteers?
Excuse me?
How are you doing for volunteers?
Well, I, you know, I never really know until I talk to everyone, but the ones that I've talked to so far, they're still, but we're still open to accepting volunteers. We'd love to have anyone join in if they're interested. Send them my way. I'm the volunteer coordinator, so.
I know, and we've got some new people in town.
Mm-hmm. So send them our way. Because we do have some gaps to fill, because some people have moved or for medical reasons or whatever.
Sure.
We've had to, we've lost some key people that have been with us for years, so definitely...
Does Barbara still track with her welcome?
She still does registration.
Yeah.
But does she still do the welcome thing together for newcomers to the town?
Yeah.
Oh, that before now.
Yeah. Barbara's former major desk registration. My question is, this is probably a good time to bring up the fact that we had a two-hour meeting with the sidewalk, DOT sidewalk pre-construction meeting, and they are planning on having it done by June 19th. But they're going to start working on it in mid-April, and it will go until, hopefully, sooner than June 19th. It's just weather-related. And they're registering their, their traffic control, and how to do that, and it's a very good team. We have, Andrew Malholland is the project manager, along with Hanscom, and we have two of the DOT people there, Aral Gorno and the construction wizard from, I don't remember her name, she was there. And it didn't seem like there was much changes to anything, so we're not expecting any change orders, knock on wood. We are hoping to come in under budget, and I've made it very clear that we're having a marathon.
Yes.
And they do get penalized if it's beyond June 19th, so that's standard in construction agreements, that they have a certain due date and they have to finish by that time. So there's some kind of...
And then Kyle's walking, right? Is it Washington Street?
It's just, yeah.
Washington Street.
It's from Flatiron Corner to just around the corner to just to where, almost to where the Little Park is.
Before you go through the next, I have a question regarding the marathon. The marathon purchased a big amount of barricades that they had on a trailer. It's sitting outside, and some of them are turned upside down, so the legs are hollow, and...
I put the city on the side there.
I'm trying to remember. I thought it was, they were throwing it at Victor's.
I thought it was like Victor's. Why is this there?
Huh?
Are you all gonna make?
Well, anyway. My point is, you may want to have somebody dump them out because they're going to fill up with water, and in a freeze, it'll burst the...
Didn't you agree to have them inside?
I thought they were undercover.
So did I, and I saw them outside. I was like, what are you doing sitting out there?
I'll have someone look into that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So who did put them there? You better check in with them.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So all the starting points and landing points are the same as last year?
Some of them.
In the marathon?
They're synchronized.
Yeah, they're held in a scoop.
They have a whole power, so they can breathe.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Do you have any other questions for me, or, and I, we just asked that if the minutes were collected, if you do approval or not, because that, we have to have that for our record.
So are there any new starting or stopping, beginning or ending in any of the four races? Is it all the same as last year?
Yes, nothing is moving.
Okay.
How are the numbers?
Good. It says rate of seven hundred.
We're still expected to have approximately seven hundred registered. Of course, more people come, which is if they bring people. But right now, we're on target, maybe even a little bit ahead.
Good.
I mean, you know, everyone thinks the marathon, but there's the half, the half actually has the biggest number of runners now, and the ultra has grown a little bit this year. So the 10K is different every year. There's a lot of people sign up at the end for that.
And you're still doing the kiddies run?
Yes.
That's such a popular thing.
We'll do that, that will start and run up to the bridge in that, which they really like. Well, actually, we have sixty-five that signed up.
It's so much fun where they're coming down the end line. The pictures of them crossing the end line.
That's really good.
It's just a photo op.
Yeah. Picture run.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we approve, go ahead with the event, approve the traffic and parking arrangements as described above, assistance for the Work Department and Public Works Department in laying out, picking up barriers and cones. And what is this, replacing alternate Canadian US Flison Water Street, assists with the Fire Department and the use of the Town Office on Way State for Traffic Control and Emergency Management. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your support.
So I would, do you have this that you could put down in a minute?
It's wonderful. It's just established now.
Yuri?
Yeah.
Doing a great job, and Rachel did a great job when you were on the...
Everyone. This community does. They can't tell. They do a great job.
Yeah.
Everybody does.
What is a mobilization for construction things? Oh, okay, right. So one of the things they asked, do you have that, mother? Here it is. One of the things, well, I'll just read it. Dear Hanscom Construction, the Town of Lubec authorizes Hanscom Construction the use of a former public works garage lot suited, situated in Math 18 Lot 6? Are you sure that's it? For mobilization. That was actually my idea, because mobilization is very expensive and it cuts down the cost, so I thought that was good that we could put some of the construction equipment there. After all, we don't own it on Flatiron Corner. The Town of Lubec authorizes Hanscom Construction to utilize the park across from the post office on Math 15 Lot 57A and Flatiron Corner Park on Math 15 Lot 260 for portable toilet locations. They want to put a porta potty.
Where is that again?
It's the Little Park, the Little Park across from the post office, and the other one is Flatiron.
The toilet, is that?
Porta potties.
Porta potty.
But when they're working on the sidewalk.
They need to have the porta potty somewhere. But they can put it right behind the kiosk there. We already talked about that. And they're just going to put one on either end. The Town of Lubec authorizes Hanscom Construction to deposit gravel mix waste from the Washington Street Sidewalk Project at the town property located behind the new public works garage off County Road, Math 8 Lot 22. It will only be gravel mix, which, we've discussed this with Ricky. It can't be anything other than, Jason made sure that we're doing that one. Because I don't know too much about it. So they needed formal approval, so do we have a motion to accept this letter?
I would, I would move that we accept this letter as written.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
How many guys are going to be working?
A lot, so it gets done quickly.
Like, how many porta potties do they need?
I just said one on either side.
So there's two porta potties. Okay.
Well, you only have, what, ten for like six hundred people?
I was just trying to compare it to the marathon, what we do.
That's right. I remember being in charge of where the porta potties went the first year. Wasn't that one of my jobs? Where should we put the porta potty?
We need more toilet paper.
All right, in other business, we had a call today from Irving Corporation. They had received a picture and a formal complaint about political signs at Flatiron Corner, and the representative from Irving Oil called me, or they called the Town Office, and I got the call. And they requested that we, I said, I read them the Supreme Court ruling that municipalities cannot discourage freedom of speech, the First Amendment. They had a ruling on municipalities. But seeing as we're subleasing it, and they're the owners, and their corporate policy is that whenever anyone is asked them to put political signs on any of their properties in the U.S., they've always said no, for both sides. So they would like us to honor, the town to honor that. There was a clause in their lease that they can end the lease at any time without any notice, just... So I think it would be a who wants to, to not have the signs of Flatiron Corner.
Yeah, I agree with you. One of the things that I think is going to be questioned is that originally, there were peace signs. I mean, it was just a peace vigil, which is apolitical. And they will probably want to know if you can, if those peace vigils...
No protests at all, no standing people with signs. It's what they want. They don't want anybody, it was supposed to be for, you know, a park. So they'll have to find another place to stand. There's plenty of places to stand in town. So as soon as we get a formal letter from them, I'll put it on Lubec Community Volting Board.
While you're on this topic of political signs, are we making any headway with having the candidate signs that are scattered all over the place that never get removed after the election? Are we getting anywhere with that? This happens every year. They come around, they put these, and they're not cheap. These are a plastic sign with metal legs and...
Generally, what...
It's a state law.
Whenever I do, whenever I'm involved...
I'm not saying for you, well.
No, 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 I know you're not. But whenever I've been involved with that kind of thing, we are encouraged to go and remove them.
Well, that's...
They have to be removed.
You're doing a fantastic job.
Well, it's self-serving. I use them as trellises for my vegetables. So I use four of them.
So I make a motion that Rachel pick them all up.
My God, I'm going to get those tomatoes staked.
That's right. And discount on tomatoes.
So I would like to make a motion that we abide by the request of Irving Oil.
Absolutely.
And we notify...
I just wanted to let you know that I think that'll be questioned, you know, that...
By taking, any questions you'll have on this can be directed...
To Irving.
To Irving Corporation.
He's going to stop people from doing it. His job is to, well, not...
Oh, I guess my question is, should it be signs? Should they put signs up there? And what I mean is...
We're waiting for a formal letter from them, what they want to do, but we could just say, by request of Irving Oil, no political signs can be put in their private property, because it's their private property, and we are leasing it by the grace of their benevolence. But, you know, that we want this park, but they want it to be used as a park and not as a sign of protest or, but they don't want political affiliation. They haven't done it with any of the other properties, so, yes. If we owned it, and I think we, if we purchased it, if we owned it, there wouldn't be a problem. But then we own other parks that they can go to.
Yeah.
We cannot deny signs, people with signs and other parks. It's just that, it's not a, we don't own it. So, but did we get a second on that, that we were going to abide, we were going to notify the role of Irving to the people?
I can second. I don't know if we did or not.
Second. Yeah, we should, because I don't want to put it on without this all political...
No, no, and as you said, it's Irving. It's not us. It's Irving. And I'm assuming that they would probably want these signs of yes on number one or whatever it is that's out there.
Those political signs, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that would have to go, too.
Well, I guess that's, that's right of ways.
There's one down there, I think.
There's right of way. And right now, the people are standing on the park. There's state right of way, and I think there's, they can't say that you can't put those little signs between, I mean, there's, yeah, so outside the...
The hole.
Whatever the bound, whatever the, we must have a very good survey of that park, seeing as we've done so much work on the sidewalk project. Whatever the boundary is of the park, that's what they can't take.
Where those little stamps are.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure where the boundary is. We'll soon find out when they put the sidewalk in, because they'll know.
I'm sure the board's being very creative to tell us where the boundaries are. State road is thirty feet off center.
Thirty feet off center, so, well, they, so I don't know. And state, the state does allow the political signs, but I think it's something like five days they have to be picked up, and they can only be put out so many days before the election. There's rules, and you're welcome to research that, Rachel, if you're interested in...
No, no, I'm just concerned that people will complain about the specific political signs that are put in there, as well as the people who are protesting or whatever.
Well, I think it's too, I think it's apples and oranges right now. I think the signs are the people that were, that were complaining about. So we go to yes, everybody, and we're just going to motion a second?
Show now. Is everybody in favor of that?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Any comments? Public comment?
I just have a question. I'm asking the Select Board if they have any decision or preparation for the AOS feasibility committee to present to the town. I don't know if you're aware or not, it came up at the AOS community meetings. Lubec was asked if they're still thinking about leaving the AOS or not, and our representatives couldn't respond with an answer. So I'm asking the Select Board, what's the status of that committee? Are they reporting to the town, and if so, when?
It has continuously been open-ended and revolving door of activity, of people being involved and not being involved.
Yeah, and I've been at most of the meetings.
Yeah, so...
I'm asking the board, what are you doing?
Well, actually, Dan is the representative on the board, so we're asking Dan.
I mean, as a board, it was, as a board, it was waiting for the, as we do with committees, for them to submit their findings, which have not...
When was that committee established?
Less than a year ago.
Yeah. I'd say last spring.
Generally, an ad hoc committee works within a year, usually by a year, and they come with their findings. They don't report on a regular basis. They do all their work publicly, it's a public meeting, and then they come at the end with the final report, like we had for the garage ad hoc.
Right, and at the last meeting that they had, they talked about doing that, but I just wondered if it had happened, and then since the, since it came up at the AOS meeting, and then Lubec...
Certainly, one of our fearless leaders has not been around, has been away, so I'm sure, you know, it gets delayed on a volunteer basis, as we all know from many cases.
Well, I'd say that...
But I will certainly get that to you. I will certainly get back to you specifically on that as well.
The Select Board would also like to know, I think we need to give it a deadline of, you have an idea of a deadline, that may be the end of April, that they come with the findings. I believe a year is what we do with ad hoc committees, so that they, by April thirtieth, we have some sort of a, that, you know, they've gotta report back to what they decided. And they can come, report back and ask for an extension for, for another year, I mean, they, the ad hoc committee could request additional time, but I think it's not unreasonable to ask for a report, a written report to the Select Board within that year. So can you, is that right?
Will do.
Dan? And April thirtieth is agreeable to you, all as being in line?
Sure.
Now, we were on public comment, any other public comments? We are going into, we need a motion to go on executive session on confidential records, one MRSA four oh five six F, which is personnel.
Committee update?
Yes, let's do committee updates before that. Anya, you have a shellfish committee update?
Well, the last, the meeting we had last month, I know we've got just two or three people there, but we're expecting a big crowd this month, first Monday of the month, because they're gonna start talking about-
And that's when?
First Monday of March.
We've got it, we've got it right there, so whatever March is. That's February.
The second.
It's February.
No, I know, but this little thing right here says March, March second, Monday night, six o'clock, they're expecting a big turnout, because they're gonna start talking about the, giving the conservation time.
Jason, Harbor Board's next Monday?
Yeah.
At six.
Question, shellfish committee, green crab, what are they doing with green crabs? Is there some plan?
They're trying to get a grant from the state to get everybody a trap, and, after you collect two, for every bucket of green crab, you get two hours' worth of conservation time, credited to you. So they submitted that in, Amanda knows all voters, said she submitted that grant in, and I think it's kind of, we'll know within a month, I think. By the end of March, we're supposed to know if we've got it.
And how much do you, are you getting money from this grant?
Well, they gotta make the tracks, the tracks, and then there's rope and stuff that you have to have to do it properly, and buoys or whatever they-
And then when a harvester has their full bucket, who keeps track of?
Amanda.
Oh, okay, all right.
She knows all about it.
What does conservation time mean? What is that?
Well, Rachel, how am I going to win a committee to find out?
Oh! Nice move.
Five and a half years I sat on the shellfish committee, and I learned everything.
You guys are gonna catch a good meeting.
It's, it's a little more complicated than a one-sentence answer. Harbor Board is Monday at six.
Right after the Safe Harbor meeting.
Right after the Safe Harbor committee meeting, yes, and everyone's welcome. Recycling, Rachel.
Funny you should ask. Recycling, we were prepared to do a moratorium on mixed paper, because there is no money in it anymore. However, Michael, who reacquainted himself with us, came in, and we started talking about ways that we could, because it's, kind of sticks in my craw, that we keep relying on, or sticks in my green crap, that I, that we, we keep putting this recycling out for somebody else to take care of. And I think Michael and I are in the same boat, where we think we need to be more responsible for our own stuff.
Since that meeting-
Yes.
I have found out that with the purchase of some not expensive equipment, we could be making paper pellets that burn just like wood pellets in a pellet boiler.
Hot diggity dog.
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, that's pretty cool.
That was what we were talking about, why couldn't we burn the paper and heat up some building or room in a building like LCOC, or down at the school? So Michael was gonna research that. That is wonderbar, that's wonderful.
That's just the beginning, it's gonna get better, I've got more information coming in.
Yeah, and we are talking about exploring the plastic recycling and possibly using them with the 3D cringes. We were just a fertile little group that day, I think it was the chocolate candy, I think we just, we, we were good, we were good.
Sounds exciting.
Yes, it was, very exciting.
As you know, recycling is exciting.
Whoever thought that there were rumors are not a bad enthusiasm in waste paper.
We were gonna, we were gonna, right, at one point, we were working on a little, you know, a little-
A ditty.
A little-
Well, and we were, we are, we still wanna incorporate the school, however-
Little advertising.
Mr. Jones, who is the teacher in charge of the children, chose that Friday afternoon to beat a path out of town, because it was the beginning of spring break, or mid-winter break, right? Is that what it is? So we will wait till he returns, and then we'll lead upon him.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll make something about ad hoc, RLF is the second at three o'clock, so March second at three o'clock, if you're not familiar with that. Come to a meeting.
Uh-oh, arrows everywhere. Safe Harbor is at five o'clock on Monday, as I already mentioned, and if we don't have any further public comment, we, I will contain a second on the motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all for coming.
You're welcome. Good night.
Isn't that exciting? I know!
Absolutely. For that, the best can get a glass into.